Sandy City Council meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Jeff, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Pete's here, Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon, here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hokinson.
Did we lose him, or are we still plugged into the last meeting?
No, the last meeting was ended. I did make sure he got a panelist invitation. I can.
But you sent him a quick text as well, and then we'll call him excused until we find out.
Will do.
And we'll call him excuse period.
Mayor Paul.
Yep, I'm here. Thank you for that. All right, welcome everybody to our city council meeting. As usual, do a quick review of what we have going on tonight. We'll call for any changes to the agenda. We'll then go into public comment. Jeff, has there been any submissions for public comments this evening?
No, Mayor, there have not.
Okay, so we will be kind of going through public comment and then we will be then going to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from February 7th, the granting of pedestrian easement to ODOT for ADA ramp project, and a noise variance for the US 26 10 I can distill loop pedestrian improvement project, which means that project is moving. All right. Under old business, we have a public hearing for Deer Meadows Subdivision Appeal. If you are on here wanting to testify for that, that will be your opportunity to testify during that public hearing. We'll then have the hood view disposal and recycling rate increase request discussion. We'll move forward into new business, which is a discussion for contract for design services for basin six and seven collection system rehabilitation project. We'll then wrap up the evening with the report from our city manager as well as our committee and council report. It looks like Councilor Hokinson is now present. Hello, welcome, Don. And with that, I'll call for any changes to tonight's agenda. All right, moving forward, no public comment has been submitted either online or in person tonight. So we'll move ahead the consent agenda unless there's discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
On the ODOT easement, does the ODOT easement of that Centennial Plaza transfer maintenance and replacement responsibilities of the ADA ramp sidewalks to ODOT?
No, the the maintenance of sidewalks and ADA ramps is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. So in this case, it would be the city since we own the Centennial Plaza.
So the easements are just for them to build?
Yes, yes.
And then on the Vista Loop project, I thought we were going to prohibit construction on Friday. It talks about is that the it talks about well, I guess I thought we were going to prohibit construction on Friday afternoons and weekends to keep traffic moving. Is that part of the plan? If not, I'm concerned about weekend traffic getting worse.
ODOT is not going to allow Friday construction or not after a certain hour. I don't think there's any Friday construction with this project. So that's, you know, that's ODOT's thing. We don't get involved in that. The Monday to Friday on this is just when you can't perform construction after 6:00 PM or before 7:00 AM. So that's the only way Friday.
So it sounds like it's all right, no Friday and then the weekend.
Okay, that's all the questions.
Cool. Thank you, Catherine. All right, sorry, further questions, discussion, or a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to be adopted.
For a second.
Also.
Motion by Councilor Sheldon, a second by Councilor Pete's old to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nays, but it were a thumbs up. I saw that, Don. Thank you. Motion carries. Let's continue to old business. Before I call for the public hearing, I do have a question for our attorney, Chris, if you're on. Since we have, since we're being asked to push the this to a future meeting, should I open the public hearing or hear the request prior to opening the public hearing?
I believe the request is to hear the matter on a date certain April 18th. So if you open the public hearing, you could well, from a, sorry, thinking out loud here, I wasn't expecting the question. It's probably best to open the hearing and then continue it because that avoids then the need for additional published notice. Under state law, once the hearings open, if you continue it to a date and time certain, that's the only time, that's the only notice that you have to give. So I would go ahead and open the hearing, allow the applicant to make its request. The city council can decide whether to accept that request, and if it does, then continue the hearing to the duck to a diamond date certain.
Go ahead and open this public hearing for stand for land use file number 21-061 AP at 7:25. Before, sorry, this is going to be kind of different. I'll just start by calling for any abstentions from the hearing body. Any conflicts of interest? Has there been any ex parte contact, including any site visits?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I walk to the site as well regularly.
All right, walk next to it on the roads, but not on the property.
Okay, I'm now going to call for any challenges to members of the hearing body to bring a challenge. If you recognize, if you're joining us in person this evening, just raise your hand and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, please click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll now read the following statements. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be eligible to raise, be able to raise it at a later at any appeal. Your comment should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the land use for land use board of appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitution or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. All right, so now to the part where I usually call for you, Kelly, but I will call for a request from the applicant.
Yeah, good evening and members of the council. My name is Garrett Stevenson. I am legal counsel for the applicant taking over from Mike Robinson. And as you probably saw via email today, we requested that the hearing be continued to a date certain, which is April 18th, 2022. Purpose for this, as I indicated, was that we would like to take another run at working with staff on getting this project to a better place than we think it is right now. In particular, we've got some ideas of some additional things we can do with the project that we hope will resolve some of staff's concerns. But we also want to give staff enough time to work with us on that and have some advanced notice of those changes and also give yourselves enough time to be able to review our revised proposal. So we think that the, I suppose it's about a little less than a two month continuance, but we think that that gives us enough time. I consulted with planning staff and the city attorney on this issue, and I've heard no concerns about that April 18th date. So that's our request tonight, and we hope that you will grant it.
Are there any questions for the applicant at this time?
Yeah, just a question. I'm not terribly concerned about it, but if planning and the opponent come to an agreement, will that come back? Mean it still comes back to us, or will we not see you again? You guys.
No, it would, it would come back to you. It's still on appeal.
So.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And just because we're meeting with them doesn't mean we will necessarily change our recommendation, just to make that very clear.
Definitely. How how much of a modification? Can they, I understand that they can kind of propose something to get compliance, but how much of a modification before they kind of have to resubmit? Or where's the, maybe it's a gray area?
I don't know if it's a clear and objective answer to that. Do you want to take that one?
Yes, that that actually has come up, not a lot, but there's a body of case law on that, and it takes a really substantial change to an application before it's required to be withdrawn and a new application submitted. Changing the site plan doesn't trigger it, changing densities, things like that doesn't trigger it. I'm trying to remember, there was a case from Oregon City a few years ago where they really, it was for a large commercial building like Home Depot, the Home Depot project, I believe, had to be withdrawn and re submitted, but that was because it was a wholesale change to what was being proposed. Changes to road layouts or site plans, those kinds of things don't trigger a requirement to re withdraw and resubmit an application. Does that help?
And then, I mean, these are going to be significant changes, or I mean, there's going to be work done, right? Because this is the second time that this has been proposed. I know one was at the staff level. Now it's happening here. This is in front of us with a five to oh, you know, from the planning commission. I just want to make sure that we're not just, you know, kicking the can down the road, but there is going to be like, there are going to be changes that are brought in front of us.
Can I add to that?
Yeah. And also, like, I'm curious, like, how much time will we have to review those changes?
Because I guess that's what I was kind of racing for is, you know, the thousand forty-six pages. I realize some of that's other things, but I don't want to see another thousand forty-six when we have. And only have so much time when we've already put in the time to review this application.
Mayor, once again, I think there was a question there that I might be able to answer. We, first of all, this was extended from, I believe, about a month ago, simply because I was taking over as land use council for them, so we needed that time. And then when we started looking at it, we already have thought of some changes we can make. They're not dramatically different as far as density and land use are concerned, but the primary concerns on this project have to do with some of the public improvements. And we've got some that we've already proposed in a letter you've seen today. But we want to give, frankly, want to give staff a little more time with those. We also want to get some feedback from staff and then give you, the council, some additional time with whatever we come up with so that you're fully briefed on it. I understand the position you're in of having to get a huge amount of documents to go through in a short amount of time, and we want to try and reduce reduce that as much as we can, but we also want to get some feedback from staff on the changes that we already have made. So we think it's appropriate to have that conversation with them. Staff can provide you some of its reactions to our proposed changes. As they mentioned, there's no guarantee that they're going to recommend approval on this. But we at least want to give them the opportunity to provide a reaction of our changes in a staff report. And so that's why we think the continuance is appropriate.
So, Chris, at this point, should I take a poll of the council?
Yeah, I think it, since we we set this up for the council to decide whether or not you want to extend the hearing. Yeah, a poll of the council, strictly speaking, the presiding officer can decide whether or not to continue a hearing. But so I don't know that a formal motion is required, but I certainly would. A poll of your colleagues is probably a good idea.
I will go ahead and, what are we thinking?
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and postpone the hearing to a date certain of what?
April 18.
April 18th, 2022. All right, with that, I now need to call in a motion to postpone the hearing to that?
No, no, strictly speaking, no, as the presiding officer, you can continue the hearing. And so have you just did that? I just dropped the gavel and move on to the next item on your agenda.
All right, thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thanks, Garrett. All right, continuing on under old business, we'll go to the hood view disposal and recycling rate increase.
Heather Dean's deputy city manager would do the presentation on this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everyone hear me okay?
You can.
Perfect. You may recall that on February 7th, we held a a work session within the regularly scheduled council meeting to discuss the request from the view disposal and recycling for an annual rate adjustment. At that time, the council asked various questions on the proposed rate increase, which is approximately 3.78%. And one of the bigger questions that stood out towards the end of that discussion was whether or not the council shall do a rate increase, or could they opt to not do that? In consultation with the city attorney's office, it was determined that based on the franchise agreement as it is, even though the September deadline or requested deadline for the rate increase was not met, the council still shall adjust rates pursuant to section 7.4, and those rates take effect at the beginning of the next billing cycle following council approval. So I believe that answers any of those lingering questions that the council had at that time. We do have Jason and Joe from Waste Connections here this evening to answer any additional questions that the council has. Otherwise, there is no additional staff report for this item. So I'll turn it over to Jason and Joe briefly to add anything they feel necessary and then open it up for questions.
Hi, Jason Hudson. I don't have anything else to add unless somebody has a question for me. Again, I appreciate you guys hearing our request and hopefully we hope that you will grant that request this evening. Thank you.
Question for Tyler.
Yes.
Kind of rips off of what Rich started last month or last meeting. So we have a contract that basically allows price increases that we don't have any ability to say no to. Is that kind of what you just explained to us?
Yeah, essentially, there is a prescribed formula within the franchise agreement that pretty clearly and explicitly lays out how future rate increases can be calculated. And so this is following that sort of formula and outline that's in the franchise agreement currently.
What's the point? Like, why do we have to vote tonight? Can anyone tell me why we don't just move on on the agenda?
Yeah, I think really it's just a matter of the franchise agreement stating that it goes before council and council votes on that. Jason Hudson and I had a conversation earlier today about potentially finding a way to move this to a consent agenda item going forward, especially if it's just the standard annual adjustment to sort of bypass this presentation and conversation that we're having right now. And but because there was some unanswered questions from the last meeting, we wanted to present that tonight and make sure everyone was on the same page.
Yeah, and Tyler, please don't take this personally because you didn't write this contract or anything. I just like, I think it's pretty messed up, just to use common language. It's pretty messed up to ask a bunch of volunteer counselors to continue to vote for rate hikes. Whether it's in a consent agenda or not, that we have absolutely zero power or control over. And I'm not saying, at the end of the day, we do have say in power over it, and that is the implementation of a contract that we approve and don't approve, and that was made by a previous council, but it feels to me like we should put in the contract that these guys got to come in front of us on an annual basis and provide us with an update of services in our plan forward so we can ask questions and everything like we have been and ask questions on our contract moving forward. But this seems really dumb to just be frank, that we have to vote on something that really, I mean, what, so what happens if we call for the vote and we all but say no tonight? What happens? And again, Tyler, I'm sorry, this is not you at all, brother.
No, 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 no problem at all. I think maybe Chris can provide an answer for that. I don't have a good answer.
I don't have the contract in front of me, but in a nutshell, you'd likely be in breach of the contract.
Yeah, no, I understand. It's just seems insane.
A little bit lost on what the, and you know, we have a different, different folks with waste connections now than with hood view, but sometimes franchise agreements are written this way because solid waste and recycling is so heavily regulated and so many of their costs are outside of their control too. Metro, for example, their tipping fees and things and add sort of the requirements that are put on them for the type of services they provide. So I can understand why you know, companies would want some certainty.
Totally.
Because you could get to the councils to say, no, 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 no.
But why are we voting?
They just walk away from contracts they can't afford to pay.
I understand the certainty in the contract that's based on a formula. I don't understand why we have to vote every time.
Have control.
Right, yeah.
And then my other thing is like the timeline in September wasn't that right? And right now, like, I mean, it's a dollar twenty-one, right? So I realize for most people, this isn't going to break the bank, and I get that. But it's still death by a thousand paper cuts. It's kind of what this is feeling like, and we have to answer to that. And I realize I can say, hey, it's in a contract, but it just kind of seems like it's putting it on us as the guilty party and because frankly, I would vote no. I mean, I'll just be blunt, but I would vote no if I wasn't required to that it would cost the city more.
Right.
If we did it than the than this is.
Right.
So, and it's nothing against them. It's just like, I, things weren't met on their end as well, and there's a timeline that we can make this up, and I feel like that's the more proper way to do it. But this is what we have to do, then this is what we have to do.
Did Don go?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Don, but please.
No, echo a lot of those statements. Last time we met, I did bring up the fact that I felt like the contract calls out a need for providing education, and we talked about the concern that that people understand why costs are going up. So I would like to reiterate that as, I think, a wonderful opportunity for people to understand why their costs are driving up, the fuel dumping fees, things, all in all, to create a more healthy education and awareness of how individually we contribute to the cost based off what we're dumping, how often we're dumping and things like that. So I think it's important to do that primarily so that people, it was mentioned earlier, so to make sure that those of us on the council aren't seen as just willy-nilly improve, you know, raising rates, but that the world's changing around us. I mean, milk's going up. People understand costs are going up, but it, I think it's important to understand when we throw stuff out, there's a cost associated with it, and here's how it all breaks down. So seeing that breakdown is very important, whether you know, here we're talking about waste and my other hat, and we're talking about sewer. It's the same problem. People need to think about what we're doing and how we're disposing of things.
Yeah. Please.
While we have you on here, I do have a comment to add, since this will be the probably the most productive thing we can do for this night on talking about this, is I got a letter in the mail saying that I hadn't paid my bill. And I had automatic withdrawn and I have paperless billing and I'm like, and I got my second bill and I hadn't paid the first bill. Well, that's not who I am or what we do. We pay, but I had no knowledge of this going forward until I had opened up a letter that I normally don't get one from the company, because I, you know, paperless, that you guys had changed it. I call up the nice lady on the other end of the phone and said, hey, what's going on? You know, well, you changed your your systems. Would have been really great to know about this. It'd been great to know about it when you guys were asking to take over the franchise. I've heard other people even on council had the same situation. There's another counselor right over there. Just raised her hand. This is lack of communication in in this process, but then you get a bill saying you hadn't paid your previous bill, just kind of one rude, but two, you you didn't know anything about it. First thing I thought was you're charging me for the Christmas non pickup case of that, right? That's the first thing that went through my mind. So I think there needs to be more education out there. Also, other companies have bought other companies and rolled that system right into theirs. And so I guess where is that communication? And can you explain a little bit more and how how you can help our community not be put in that situation? Going like right now, going forward, because I know there's several other people. I'm not the only one in town that had automatic payments. They just stopped without any communication.
Well, also, is there is there going to be a penalty for, I mean, like a late payment penalty or anything like that, or anything like that assessed to you as well, or anybody else?
And I'll just add that, you know, the explanation I got was that, well, they sent me something in the mail and on it's going to, since I have, you know, paperless billing and all that, I don't I don't look at all that mail, you know, eventually it sits in a pile and I eventually, you know, file it after three months, but otherwise, I mean, I look at the important things, but I didn't look at it. So that's, that's the thing that me probably sending emails, and I think you guys did after the fact, send some electronic thing saying, you know, we've changed our system and we're now, you know, here's what you need to do to re re-sign up for automatic billing. I think you guys did that afterwards, but probably another email to catch people up on that wouldn't go, you know, unnoticed.
Well, I appreciate the, as tough as it is to hear some of the feedback, it's good candid feedback and it shows us where we need to improve. I I commit to doing a better job working with the city manager and deputy city manager. You know, I'm up for regular meetings, maybe quarterly meetings and and that way better communicating. Happy to come for the council once a year to allow for questions. Again, you know, we, you know, we did send letter out, but the feedback, it's, it's wasn't good enough. We should look at maybe doing combination of email. We do have an app that people can sign up for where, you know, we can send messages out through an app. But we'll continue to use those types of technology to better communicate.
One of the feedback I'll give you as well that you can help on and realize this is when I was talking to the lady, she said you needed an invoice number. I asked where it was on the paper. You can't get it on the paper. You have to call in to get it. And it was asked for it when signing up for the account. They felt very inundated with lots of people around Sandy, so I don't know if there's a follow-up letters you can be sending out, something to the community, especially since the fee is going to be going up as well, that this is to help ease this. And then also, not only that, you know, you have a generation that is very we need a little bit more handholding on these type of things as well to get reset back up that has already been done that. So I don't, anyway, it's, it's a whatever additional communications and leeway for people to get readjusted to it would be nice.
Thank you.
And I'll just add one thing to that. Jason, we can, staff and you and your team can work together. We also have a monthly newsletter that we send out, and so we can figure out a way to piggyback off of your communications and add that to ours to make sure there's just an added layer of that information getting sent out.
Appreciate.
I think we can put some, you know, sentence or two on our, on our next invoice, or the invoice that includes this, this rate adjustment explaining what it is. And I think we can also put a comment in about the, the conversion and some conversion difficulties. And apologize for any inconvenience customers have. And I'm pretty confident that if there's some late fee attempted or something like that, some some extra charge, you will back those off. You know, we don't want people to be negatively affected financially by this confusion on our part. So apologies.
Motion. I know.
We do a group motion.
Second, I'll make the motion. I already said I wouldn't vote for it, but I make a moment due to the, I make a motion that due to the contract language that we approved that we're raped.
For a second.
I'll say.
Go, give it a call.
Tell you, I'm not paperless. I am papered, so I paid my bill.
Motion by Councilor Sheldon, a second by Councilor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O's nay. I saw your thumb up, Don. Thank you for the yay. Yep, all right, motion carries. Moving on to new, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Never going to be fun with the rating, right? Thank you. All right, under new business, let's go to contract for design services for basin six and seven for the collection system rehabilitation project.
I'm going to put Jenny over on your public works director in the spotlight on this one.
Yeah, Jenny, here we go.
Get her started here. Where I think I'll want to get the staff report.
All right. Thank you, councilors. The decision to be made tonight is whether or not to award a contract for design and construction management services for the rehabilitation of basin six and seven in the city's wastewater collection system. for the rehabilitation of basin six and seven in the city's wastewater collection system. And the purpose of these projects is to continue to reduce infiltration and inflow into the city's wastewater system. Um, I'm not sure how deep to go into this, but I'll just summarize the background and context. Um, the staff solicited proposals for this on January eleventh. Um, we received one proposal on January twenty fifth. The proposal was Leeway Engineering Solutions. And to give some context, basin six and seven are the oldest parts of town. These two basins were identified as the third and the fourth largest sources of inflow and infiltration um, during the collection system flow modeling work that was done in twenty eighteen. Um, we do have some maps that were attached. Basin six is located north of highway twenty six between Bluff Road and Ten Eyck Road. And basin seven is located south of highway twenty six, um, bounded by University Avenue, highway two eleven and Miller Street.
You have a map you can throw up on the screen?
Yeah.
The file is so big, it's these little old Chromebooks that are even maybe up and can't load them.
Tough way, tough way.
Oh, now it's going. Oh. This is better, anyway.
Yeah.
As we get to the map, may I just ask a quick question? Um, the Leeway consulting has been great, but you said it was the one bid that we moved forward on. And we've been working extremely close there. Um, are this project's growing and growing? Are we doing enough due diligence to make sure that we're getting multiple bidders? Uh, you know, to keep drive costs down? I just want to make sure that we, and I'm sure they're not, but I I I want, you know, trust but verify. I just would hate the idea that they're just kind of dictating their price, knowing kind of the internals of this project and knowing that they, I don't, have they really had a contested bid the last couple at this point? Um, it's just a concern I'm starting to have. Is there a reason I should feel better about it?
Sure. Um, let's maybe take you some deep background.
Yeah.
Um, both of our lead consultants, Preston Van Meter, who's now with West Coast, and Rob Lee, who's now with Leeway, started a lot of the facility planning work with Murray Smith. They continued to do this work when they left because they had the knowledge and system. My my best guess is we're in a time where there's so much work going on that I think that with this particular work and Rob Lee's expertise as being a nationally renowned collection system and the fact that, um, these were some of his first jobs he took on, um, when he created his new firm. Um, I I do think that for this collection system rehab, many chose, they just thought that Rob Lee was the shoo-in just because of how well he's done. However, I would say that he did give the city some rather discounted prices, at least from what we've seen in the past few contracts. This current contract, though, is it's it's a very fair price. We've examined it compared to the other work. It's very reasonable for the quantity and quality. Mike actually provided, um, he looked at the number of lateral connections, the length of force main. It's still, it's it's still a very, very good price. And he really is one of the best in the nation. So, but to answer your question, I I have the same concern, but I think that I know personally how many people have reached out to me on LinkedIn. When you get into treatment, that there's there's different consultants. So I I am expecting a lot more competition for the the bigger parts of Sandy Clean Water.
Got you. Thank you.
Did I have? Um, okay. Well, um, you hit some of the highlights there. Uh, Leeway partnered with Sladen, um, is wrapping up, uh, the work on basins two and six. It's it's been extremely successful and it has gone extremely fast. So, um, Leeway's proposal for the desired services is two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty eight. Um, like I've said, we we've reviewed this. We feel that this is in line with the fees he's given. And we should also say there's some additional work that's included in this, which has to do with updating and calibrating the city's collection system model, which will basically tell us how effective, um, the collection system rehab work has been. So they're going to look at what the system was doing before the rehab and after. And this analysis is going to be important in our ongoing negotiations with the regulators regarding the system capacity. So there's some additional optional tasks included within that what that we would like to exercise. Um, and our our recommendation is to award the contracts and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Leeway for an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty six thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars.
Questions? Question? Don, go ahead.
So the first one, I just, I just want to clarify, but I think this is for the construction and design management. So that Sladen or whoever, I I guess there will be a bid package that will go out for the actual uh, construction work, is that correct?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, so that just keep that in mind. The second part I just want to note is that even though this goes out as an independent bid, I I think it would be problematic if Leeway didn't win this in terms of the the continuity and the the reality that this is part of a bigger package. Um, it, I'm glad that, say, here that the pricing is competitive and in line, because obviously when you're when you're in thick with one consultant, you know, you can be taken for a ride. But, uh, it's nice to hear that that it's being competitive right now. And like I said, I I think that integrated view that they're providing is is very, very valuable to us.
I and I I totally appreciate that, Don. That's that's right where I am too. This, I think he's been great. Just wanted to make sure that prices, price is stable and good. All right. Yep.
I move to, uh, any other? Carl, did you?
Nope.
I moved toward the contract for design, construction management and related services for the basin six and seven collection system rehabilitation project Leeway Engineering Solutions and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Leeway Engineering Solutions for an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty six thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars.
Great. There are second. Second, motion by councillor Walker, a second by, oh, give it to Don remotely. Uh, second from councillor Hockinson, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Um, nay or thumbs down, motion carries. All right. Thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, Jordan, report for our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, council, so, uh, actually, that item is a is a big one. Um, it's continuing our Sandy Clean Waters program. One of the things that, uh, we've kind of been responding to and working hard at is the INI program and taking some of the the pressure off our treatment plant. And originally, if you remember the facilities plan, we were only going to do basin eight, two and eight, um, in in this first planning horizon. But, um, with feedback from the community and DEQ and other regulators and also with the success of receiving the fourteen point seven and ARPA funds, um, we we felt like it was important to advance this work um, into this next, next year, uh, to get more done, uh, in terms of the infiltration and inflow. So excited about moving quickly on this. Uh, there will be more coming because, uh, we're looking at doing another CMGC process for this, given uh, the timeline and being able to design and construct at kind of the same time.
Yeah, on that, that pipe that you showed us from the, uh, community center.
Yeah.
That's in this basin here.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, uh, part of this, uh, replacement for all that type of line or?
There's definitely that kind of, what's that pipe called?
Orange bird. Yeah, I learned that too.
Maybe we should take a chunk and give it to, uh, Leeway there. He can put it on his wall as when it went to. But anyway, uh, but that piece there will be helping be part of the
Yeah.
It's part of the problem right now, right? So.
Yeah, that that's a great example, uh, of our own facility that had massive infiltration because of uh, I mean, it was a ball of roots from a tree and so rainwater stuck.
So in this, that that's the oldest part of our city is what I just heard. So a lot of this will be that type of pipe.
Perhaps. Kind of depends on when the building.
Well, I mean, or hopefully so, so it takes, you know, we we fix it all and then all of a sudden we have a lot more capacity or alleviate some of the overburdeners of the capacity.
Yeah, and I think in this basin is where we have the ODOT stormwater catch basin issues, right? That we'll have to figure out. We with smoke testing, we saw smoke come out of the catch basins here on in front of city hall, actually. So we know there's some issues there. So we're always happy to find those things. We should, I mean, you know, this is what we're trying to resolve, but, um, cool. So, um, speaking of the community center, that that issue has been resolved. Um, kudos to the crews, both the public works and the parks maintenance folks for getting out there and helping dig. And then we get the crews in there to replace the pipe. Um, but again, like being super responsive and getting them out there. I know the parks and recreation staff had come up with, uh, some alternative plans, uh, for facilities for a week or so there. But, um, we have the center back open. We're doing the happy hours for senior for starting programming, teen programming, kids programming at the center and also at the library now. Um, we turned to the library in person programming. Um, so great to kind of see us come out of the COVID uh, closures, the closures and delayed programming. Um, speaking of the programs, uh, do you want to mention we're still working on that homelessness forum? Um, and councillor Smallwood and Sheldon and I need to probably get together to prep for that. Um, and and get us across the finish line on some of the other things we've been talking about. But, uh, got some dates that will propose probably through a polling. Um, and I realize I got to avoid spring break now because we were thinking about March and that timeline, stay away from council meetings. But, uh, we'll put out some dates that are trying to, um, nail that down. I've reached out to, uh, the list of attendees and they're excited about the opportunity for this. On, uh, legislative update, um, you may have saw released today that there's a hundred million dollar rule Oregon infrastructure package that's being discussed right now. Sort of a compromise bill, um, that's uniting the legislature to get some of the other things done. Uh, this would be something that comes out, uh, through the budget process. Um, we're, we're still hopeful that, uh, we'll get traction with our requests on three sixty second and bell or the water project. But this may be a pathway to getting something in there, uh, similar to what we've seen before, where districts and and more rural, small communities may get something um, in recognition of, uh, our massive infrastructure needs. Uh, so we've kind of been in contact with PAC West daily on what the status is on bills and, uh, we're at with that.
So, Jordan, so how does that work then? Would we find our ways into being a line item in that legislation? Or is it something that we would then have to fight with other communities over at the administrative level?
I think at this point it is a line item unless they decide to do something they did before. But what I heard, they're trying to stay away from that sort of give every district some pain or whatever process. So we're hoping we get the line item path, but, um, you know, a lot of politics are still at play. How to spread that kind of money around. Um, we are talking with them about other, you know, working to business organ programs of the other structure package funding too. Um, we did submit testimony for the other budget bills that went through the ways and means. Um, and and then this kind of came out after that. Uh, so they kind of advised us to take this route. Uh, we're still waiting on the bill for the legislative fix to the fourteen point seven to make that just for the wastewater system improvement. So it's not labeled as just wastewater treatment plant, which gives us a lot of flexibility. Um, that should be done by the end of the session. Uh, fun, a fun one. Um, let's see if you guys are in the mood for this.
Um, probably not.
That's actually fun. So for a comprehensive plan, which is a major planning effort here for the next couple of years, um, one of the things that, you know, helps kind of promote it and market the plan is to come up like a sort of tagline, right? What is this plan? Um, comprehensive plan is, what does it mean? You know, we don't, most community members don't really understand it or, you know, you don't talk about comprehensive plans really, right? Um, so, you know, what what was typically done is you come up with a tagline, right? And so we've thought of like envision Sandy, imagine Sandy.
So who's we for? So I don't know.
Well, the consultant staff, you know, throwing out ideas. And if you care about these things, right? But it does, you know, to build the market, the plan a little bit better and, you know, visualize what this thing is.
Social media has to.
Social media has to.
Wait for it. We're innovation, we're celebration.
So I'm here in front of the council. So what's been thrown out is, uh, some things like envision Sandy. Gresham has imagined Gresham, so I don't know if we want to do imagine Sandy. Um, but that's an idea, Sandy twenty fifty, given this is a long term plan for the next twenty five years or so. That's a nice round number, you know.
Except for we just, we had the twenty forty plan.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Ten years, um, shape Sandy, shape Sandy twenty fifty. Open to any ideas, if you guys want to think about it or, um, you know, but I didn't want to be the sole. Sandy two point.
But you can be very ingenuative all you want to, but sometimes it throws some of these fancy terms out there and people still don't understand what you're talking about.
True.
In the twenty forty, you know, I I understood what twenty forty meant was, so I kind of inclined to do twenty fifty.
Except we did the twenty forty back in nineteen ninety. Long, that's a long, long term.
That's unusual. Well, we ended up almost getting to forty, so.
I kind of like the envisioned, but.
I like envision Sandy, dream Sandy.
We're not tuned this.
I know.
We, I don't know, envision, dream, whatever.
It is a seven week, maybe all bring our own idea to our retreat and come up.
Sure. Oh, sure. I I think we're, you know, we're, we're getting close to kind of kicking off.
So, um, can't wait till the retreat.
I mean, we could make, just delays a little bit, but, you know, we're getting the first.
I was going to give a bottle of wine to the winner who picks it. Darn it.
All right. Now I'm interested.
So I think the the top two that we're kind of talking about is envision Sandy or Sandy twenty fifty. And that's, they're different, but they have the same kind of thing, right?
Let's say it again.
Envision Sandy or Sandy.
And what was Gresham's?
Imagine Gresham.
So we're only going out, I mean, I would say only, but, you know, I mean, twenty forty was done in ninety seven. And we went out, you know, forty three years.
Compenses are typically fifteen to twenty.
Okay. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but.
I think it's a long time to.
All right. Yeah, that's.
All right.
Okay.
Envision Sandy or Sandy twenty fifty.
Twenty fifty.
There we go. I like it. Sandy twenty fifth.
I'm bringing them wide.
See, that was fun, right?
Now, that's group thing if I've ever seen it.
I learned my lesson. Don't ever like pick paint colors or come up with.
Not allowed to pick paint colors.
That's right.
That is, that's been taken off of your job.
And just a reminder about goal setting on, uh, March fifth, uh, nine AM, we're doing at the library committee room. Part of that. Thank you. Thank you for indulging.
Just how people are colorblind. I thought it was, I thought it was green.
I thought it was primer. I had no idea he was actually going with it. All right, uh, Don, you always get to go first.
Hey, I'm, I'll pass today. Before the goal session.
And enjoy your vacation. Carl.
Yeah, I'll keep it pretty simple. Um, I had a chance to talk to and drive, um, the road between Proctor and Mine Anger two eleven, whichever you want to call it with the trucker. And, uh, he had a hard time making that corner. It was pretty tough there. And there's a couple of posts in the way, uh, and if you would have added a, a long trailer to it, it'd have been, you know, really hard. And people do have to pull back and stop at that white line. I think that is a lot of what's keeping people from wanting to make that turn. And when you add a little bit of traffic to it, you see truckers going down twenty, uh, Barco and Lang and Sand. I think we need to relook at that corner a little bit. I think there's some, some need, if nothing else, I would love to see truckers less driving that road, maybe a sign or something of that sort. My trucker friend said that a sign would, uh, get the word out. Some kind of way to stop that from happening. But, um, I know that the public works put a bunch of effort into the road fixes on Lang and Sand here this past summer. Appreciate that. Never know if that's going to mean more of that kind of stuff happening. We don't stop the traffic. So just that's something I experienced this past couple of weeks. Other than that, I had a great conversation, uh, with Jenny at this past day. And I appreciate all the education and the information she was able to download into my head. So I look forward to a lasting, lasting, great, um, management the next few years. Not discounting mics at all, so other than that, I'm done.
Um, I had a couple of minor things. I wanted to ask, um, Jordan about, or I don't know who this is, maybe it's a Dave or or Kelly, but the, um, Mount Hood cigar folks are wanting to put a, some sort of a smoking lounge, something or other on the west side of the property. But the um, Mount Hood cigar folks are wanting to put a, some sort of a smoking lounge, something or other on the west side of the property.
There. Expansion of their, their building or?
I, I'm not quite sure. That's what, that's what the staff report said on the economic development thing. And I just, you know, the, the, the roof overhang, you know, when you look at Google Earth. Is almost to the property line and I just want to make sure that that expansion is not going on to our right of going with the verification. So if they can get into that. And then the other thing I just had a question on was kind of the um, having, you know, those, those staff reports. Or the, you know, the department reports once a month are really helpful. There's a couple of departments that haven't really updated recently. And I find them really helpful to just kind of find out what's going on. And I appreciate the departments that are doing them. One question I do have is the um, I'm aware that there's, I guess in the community services department. We have a, you know, there's the transit and then there's the community service. Do we have a liaison to the transit board?
That's me.
Okay, um, well evidently in the community services. You know, there, there's the door-to-door service and transit. And then in the community services, I guess we are responsible for going and picking up people in Timberline. Uh, with, with big woods and.
Big Valley Woods. Big Valley Woods.
Yeah, Big Valley Woods. Is that that big huge development that's out there towards Estacada?
It's the, no, it's the manufactured home park off of Tickle Creek.
Yeah, that. And then also, but also just going almost to Damascus and, you know, way kind of up the mountain pretty, quite a bit. And the service that we provide is that we go out and pick out, you know, pick up one individual person and take them to, you know, doctor's appointments and all sorts of stuff. And I'm just wondering, you know, that seems that there's very few people use the service. But it takes a lot of time and effort to, you know, provide this service. And when I look at, you know, why do we have kind of what basically a shadow transit service in the community services department rather than. Accomplish those goals in the transit service or something. And I know there's been a little bit of discussion, but I'm, you know, and I don't want to kind of get down in the weeds. But I am just kind of wondering, you know, I, my belief is that, you know, these, those kind of services should be for city residents. Because that's who's paying for them. And it's a nice service for, you know, to, to do that. I'm sure these elderly or whoever they are, people way out boonies appreciate getting, you know, getting this service. But I just kind of question the, you, you know, the efficiency of, of providing that service at the cost of it. To the, you know, how much the equipment costs and the certification for the drivers. Again, duplicative, duplicative services between the two departments. And if there's a way to kind of combine that all into one transit or whatever, to make it more efficient and allow the community services folks to focus on. You know, rec programs and all the other great things they do. I'd like to see that. That's all I have. And then I just want to thank Michael for his thirty-seven years of service. This is probably his last staff.
Thirty-six, councilor.
It feels like thirty-seven.
Did you have a?
I was just, we could prepare something that kind of explains the two different.
Yeah.
Services and why I'm with funding sources and all that, but.
Services and whatnot, and that's the reason, for the reason with the nails on those and everything else.
Rich, to Carl's um, month or bi-weekly uh, statement about trucks on that. What would it, I, I know that some of this legislation has changed, but what would it take honestly to make that a truck route? Posted, enforceable, all of that. Like, have we explored that at all? Um, because I believe that's something.
No truck route?
Yeah, yeah, when I say it's a truck route, it's, it's prohibited to trucking. So it's, it pops up on their GPS that they're not allowed there. You'll see it, a good example of one is if you take Sunnyside between Damascus and Happy Valley, there, it says no, you know. No trucks except through, you know, through fair traffic or whatever it says. Big white sign, enforceable and all of that. I, I believe that's something that we can control within the city. Yeah, so I mean, I, I would. Ask for explanation or exploration of that.
Yeah.
Maybe do that.
We've, we've talked about that. Um, that's basically answer. We get to sign out and then it just becomes traffic enforcement.
Well.
And then also.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it becomes, it should pop up on their GPS not to turn because it's a prohibited truck route. So it's a, it's a route that's prohibited for commercial trucks. And so it should pop up on, a lot of the truckers will have GPS specific for truckers. So it should pop up on that when you notify the property.
But, but the problem lies, it is, it's that junction that Proctor and Cuba level being so tight. And then cars pull right up, even though there's a line there, that white line that puts, shows them where they're supposed to stop before the light. They will push back that. And when that happens, and you get a big long trailer, it, the car has to pull back. Or the truck has to go someplace else, make the turn and come back up. It isn't backed out to like, so it's more than just a sign.
Well, yeah, I think, I like what you're saying because that goes out there.
Yeah, I'm saying it would prohibit those trucks to be, even be where you're talking about, right?
Langen Sand and Barco. Yeah, I like it.
Anyways, just thought I threw that out there. Um, the, the last thing is, um, I'm trying to stay on a police thing. But last month was, for those of you that don't know, it was human trafficking month. Um, it's something I'm kind of passionate about personally. And so um, I wanted to thank, since he's sitting there, Ernie, for uh, his guys have actually been pretty active in that. Um, and I think it's kind of an unsung hero thing. So uh, it's Officer Boyz is, is who I'm understanding and shows up to a lot of that. And, and express an interest in, in helping those victims and, and catch the traffickers. So I just wanted to take an opportunity, uh, because last month it didn't come up as available. So to express that, um, thanks. So thank you.
It's great.
All right, uh, let's see, Perks has been busy. Um, I should say that Perks and Rec Department has been busy. So for starters, um, there will be a softball league returning this year. So um, hopefully we're starting to get back to some semblance of, of normal. Um, the department, uh, I'm reading my notes here, so I apologize because there's quite a bit, I don't want to mess up. Um, was successful in securing a grant for the trail connection for the community campus at Sandy River Park. And so that uh, will probably, you'll start to see some forward movement on that late spring, early summer. Let's see, uh, they've also been working to identify some of their uh. Assets, asset management so that they have a good idea of like where money should go first and foremost. So you know, hey, maybe this swing set needs repair. This, this park needs more attention than another. So that's good. Thought there was something else. Another big thing.
Priorities.
Uh, they're working with, um, they're very excited to hear the pool exploratory task force outcome. So and what's going to happen there. Yep, they're working with their priorities. Um, I feel like there was one more thing, but it's escaping me right now. So that's all I've got. I'm meeting tomorrow night.
Cool. Thanks, Lori.
All right, yeah, uh, Kathleen rightfully stole my thunder. I was gonna see if this was the last meeting for Mike. And uh, thank you, Mike, for your, your, um, your dedicated history, uh, knowledge. And uh, I've been, you know, here, it's my sixteenth year on council, two years with planning and Mike's been here the whole time. Um, and I know what that means for uh, an agency that has a lot of history and knowledge. And I know you live right down the street, so Kathleen's here. So I'm sure you're going to get tapped with a lot of uh, historian type knowledge. And we appreciate that, your dedication to our community. So thank you for, for all those years of service.
Yes.
That's all I had.
All right, um, and not much for me. Sandy Mountain Festival's back. Uh, we, we were having the carnival, then we lost the carnival and now we're having the carnival. So the carnival is back for now. I think it's back. Uh, yeah, same property is normal right there by Ant Farm, um, right there in the center of town. Well, yeah, well, you know, right there, that, that, the piece property, we always have it. Um, so that's good. C four has just been addicted to talking about tolling. And it's just been a big fight. And what's been amazing about it is, is that everyone's on the same darn page. No one wants it. Uh, but it's a lot of having regionals come in and different folks and how we're going to not want it.
So someone's sat on that and been on the exact meeting for that. And you attended that. Do you think that anyone outside of C four is listening to C four?
Not really, you know, yeah, they're still kind of fortune ahead and.
Like, I mean, you have all the uh, government elected officials represented there for all over the county.
Yeah.
You would think it, I, I know because I have this big, I had a big voice on it before.
Right. I mean, yeah, and you're talking about, you're talking about tolling with no additional capacity. And then there's no side, you know, streets to be able to push people off onto. There's no strategy to really mitigating. It's just, it's not gonna happen.
Eight seconds.
Maybe, right, yeah, yeah. Uh, so that's what's been going on there. Obviously, we have a retreat coming up. We'll be talking, uh, meeting a little bit more about that tomorrow. Um, so looking forward to seeing you guys all there the first Saturday of March. Um, and then just, I'd like to say to Mike, Mike, you're one of the coolest parts about getting to come back and be mayor. Uh, because it's a shadow council. You're like the one guy who was around for both, you know. And so, you know, coming to get to see the term, like, wow, that Mike, you know, and, and now I'm mayor. It's been really cool and getting to know you a little bit better. Because kind of knowing of you and around you for that amount of time and then, you know, seeing the great work that you've done here. So just thank you for your decades of, you know, dedication and service to our community. I know it means a lot to all of us. It's a big reason why the community is the way it is today. So, thank you. Uh, with that, thanks everybody. We'll go ahead and adjourn our council meeting. Thanks, Don. Have fun.